All right, I asked the Secretary of Treasury to call the role.
Scott Haworth, President.
Here.
Wim Pelz, Secretary of Treasury, I'm here. Edward J. Warner, Jr.
President.
Ann Walker.
President.
President.
And Wim Parish.
President.
We're all here.
All right, everybody, welcome to the Monday, February 13th, 2023, 9:38 meeting here at Town Hall, here on the nice second floor of the Town Hall. We have a couple of discussions on and then we're going to get right into it because we have a very, very busy day and busy agenda, a lot going on. There's a discussion about Article 7, Section 47 regarding permit modifications and renewals. This was about the stamp plans. We've been having this conversation back and forth and it's an evolution with this regulation. Mark, you want to opine on where you, where we ended up with this?
Sure, I think after our last public session, we had, the trustees had come to the conclusion, after I provided some advice and we listened to a gentleman who came in and spoke with us, that the section as written did not need to be amended.
Right, I think we got to take it a little further, though, on this, though, because I think there were some questions concerning at what point in time a modification would be requiring, you know, an already approved permit that was requesting to be modified, at what point in time, if those plans were accepted prior.
Yeah.
Without the stamp.
That, right.
At what point would the trustee board make the determination that now, you know, it's too big of a change in the plan and it's got to go back for a stamp versus it's not going to...
Right, what we determined, and I have a handout on a related issue as well, it's five days for the trustees regarding some proposed language with regard to specifically modifications versus renewals.
Okay.
But as to the stamps...
You have a copy for Joe?
The determination was made that if a survey...
Mark, you have one more copy?
I have my copy here, there should be five.
I want to have Joe do, pick a look, too.
Oh, okay. I don't have another copy.
We'll get them.
I'll get them.
This is a work session, we're not, we're not, we're going to have to take some time to review this anyway. I mean, this has been through several sessions of conversation here at the Board. It was good that Floyd Carrington came and brought a bunch of real good information for the Board's consideration. I thank Floyd for taking his time to come in on his own to, you know, express the importance of respecting surveys and what you can and cannot do legally on a legal document.
Yes.
Right, so...
And we determined that if a survey was altered in any way and changed, then it would require another stamp before the trustee...
To remain being a valid document.
Right, and they would mark it that there had been a change and then stamp it themselves.
Right.
Short of that, if the initial plans were not changed and submitted with a stamp, a new stamp was not necessary. And there was a code amendment to reflect that.
Okay.
Do you want to discuss?
Yeah, absolutely. And this is a separate issue, but a newer issue with regard to permit modifications and renewals and whether or not we need a code amendment. Forty-seven, Section A3 mentions the word alter, which would cover any repair to a dock. So there may not need to be an amendment. However, if you go to the next page, forty-seven F., specifically forty-seven F.1, the section marked "in conjunction with the application," it says "in conjunction with the application for work, the trustees require the following for all new work, reconstruction, and replacement of existing structures." And we could clarify that further, although I don't think it's necessary with the language that I'm proposing on page three. Which would read "in conjunction with the application for work," and then add the language, "including applications for modifications but excluding applications for renewals. The trustees require the following for all new work, reconstruction, and replacement." So only the middle part would be the addition. Again, I don't know if it's necessary because the Article 647A3 already includes the word alter.
So any change in the original...
Which would be a modification, not renewal.
In one way or another, it would be a change in the original structure.
Right.
So with that being done, we'd need all the proper paperwork, stamp and everything, so that when George or whoever is our inspector goes to inspect the project, he has a piece of paper, he has a survey, and he has all the, you know, site plans that...
Exactly. For a modification, not for a renewal.
Right, right.
If it just needed more time to do the work, they already got a permit for, they would not. So it's really up to the trustees whether you want to keep the section as is. I think it's probably covered with the word alter or add that additional language regarding modifications and excluding renewals.
I mean, you're just restating it.
Yeah, I think so.
So it's repetitive, right?
Could always revisit it down the road if you choose to.
Well, we just want to make sure whatever plans are submitted and the project is done, that the inspector has it and it's the same, it matches up.
Yes.
Yep, so it's enforceable. If it's not done to, you know, our code or the plans, it's enforceable in court.
Right, and I believe the section gives the trustees the clear discretion to not require new stamps for renewals, but to require them on modifications.
Okay.
Which is the issue.
That's great.
Got to get my phone to not be ringing. Dropped it one too many times. All right, so we'll review this and we'll make a determination, Mark. But, I mean, I feel confident that you say that it's already covered in the alter section of it, you know. All right, Trustee Warner.
Yes. We have brought its boat lifts and potential regulations. This has been discussed, I would say, for the last eight or 10 years, boat lifts within the town. We have permitted them or given permits for them in specific areas, and there are other areas where they have been placed in with the help of our permit and review. And looking at some of the prohibited areas, it's in these areas. So what I'd like to do is the Board to take a look at them, come up with any thoughts, being that we have new types of boat lifts, they don't lift the boats up, they're not as obtrusive on the water, they don't have these giant pilings and they don't lift the boats up as high as they're used to, more, it's almost like having them at a dock when the tide rises and falls, they're not five or six or seven feet out of the water. So I'd like everybody to give a little bit of thought and input on this, and I'd like to have a discussion and maybe move to legalizing boat lifts, because there are some good, you know, things that come with this. A lot of times the boats that are used or on these boat lifts, they don't have anti-fouling paint, which eventually ends up in the water and causes, you know, degradation in the marine environment, shellfish and eelgrass. And it's a way of protecting your vessel during a storm, it lifts it up out of harm's way. And it's, a lot of the areas, well, several of the areas already have these boat lifts of one type or another, but I'd like to really, you know, hone in on a boat lift that wouldn't lift the boat up as high and also legalize them and basically throughout the whole entire town, come up with a set of parameters that would work to do that.
What are you thinking as far as water?
The water depth, I mean, at a floating dock, you have 30 inches of water, so in place of maybe a floating dock, somebody might ask for a boat lift. So I would say 30 inches of water would be a starting point for discussion. James, I don't know if you want to have any...
It's on the back of the...
Yeah.
Oh, I hear.
Yeah, I mean, there were some, yeah.
So two and a half feet, up in a moment, and then it's going to be two and a half feet above mean high water is the maximum height of the boat?
Correct. So, you know, it's not as a, you know, it looks aesthetically better, it protects the vessel and, you know, it's, you know, in some places, instances, we can, you know, get rid of a floating dock, which would cause, or have less shading on the bottom, so, you know, and I think it's something, I think it's something that's, you know, already happening in many areas for many 20-plus years. And some of the older boat lifts are very, you know, they have, you know, 12-inch pilings and the boats are actually four or five feet above mean high water, which, you know, basically, you know, you're looking at, your neighbor's looking at your boat. So I want to, I want to come up with more of a consistent management protocol and something that would work, you know, the whole town, not just individual areas.
Had the pushback about boat lifts been primarily because of aesthetics for the neighbors in addition to concerns about the environment?
I think originally the town, the trustees were just not in favor of boat lifts, but they have been haphazardly approved throughout the town. I'll give you, for instance, there's a, in, what was it, in Red Creek, Red Creek Pond, we permitted a boat lift in there and it's a solar stream boat lift and it's a pontoon boat lift and it's almost like a jet ski dock, it's very low profile, the boat goes up there, it lifts up, it's run by solar and it has vegetable oil for hydraulics. So we approved it because thinking that the gentleman doesn't paint his boat, so that anti-fouling paint isn't going to get into the environment, using vegetable oil as hydraulic oil and a solar power would be something, and it's, you really can't tell that there's a boat lift there because it's such, so low profile. So we need to do some research and we have been given quite a few documents as far as boat lifts to look at over my tenure on the trustees. So I just want to move, I want, if the Board has a sentiment of moving forward, I want to move it forward and come up with, you know, a plan so that we can apply this.
I mean, this would, you know, obviously require a public hearing.
No, I, no, we already had a public hearing and we denied a couple of boat lifts in Smith's Creek. And some of these areas, I think, would be appropriate for a boat lift and actually have boat lifts around the perimeter of Smith's Creek. So that's why I want everybody on the Board to be able to, you know, look at this, you know...
So you're saying we would need another public hearing?
Well, I want to come up with an actual set of parameters and plans that we would all support as far as boat lifts and then propose it in a public hearing format so the people and the public can give us their input and then we can, if it's successful, craft a document to put in our blue book that we would allow boat lifts throughout the town.
Okay, so it needs a little more discussion and...
Yes, it does.
Thanks, Ed.
I'd say if the trustees can review what's proposed, and if you have any additions, then we can talk about the next public session and then schedule a public hearing after that, if there's no changes.
Right.
Are boat lifts ever on moorings?
Only jet ski float would be on a moor, which would be almost a boat lift because you run the jet ski up and it lifts it out of the water. These boat lifts would actually have hydraulics or electric, you know, to lift the boats up. And, you know, there are boats as large as, I believe, 40 feet that have, are on boat lifts, which are legalized, so, so that's why I want to, you know, go through the whole process.
Okay.
All right, so...
Great, thank you, Ed.
We'll do a review.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so we can get right into general permit applications, if you guys are ready for that.
Yeah.
I have 11 Ramona Drive, Hampton Bays, I see Billy Mack is here from First Coastal.
Everybody?
Hello.
Monday?
Come on.
Good morning, Bill.
Everybody?
You did a field trip?
Oh, good, that was my first question.
You did a field trip.
Yeah, this is a site that's been inundated for the last several decades and we're looking to propose a simple rock protective structure right at the high water line.
One rock?
Rock structure.
Simple rock.
Multiple rocks, yeah.
You definitely have to do something there.
Consistent with what's been approved before.
Right. He's got the area staked out, James and I went there and we did a review, we looked at all the flags and whatnot. And we learned a lot about the site and we also found, you know, more, more questions to ask, but James and I, James and I'll deal with that later, right? As we go down there and we take a look at it, but I mean, you have to do something there because it is getting beat up pretty bad. And I see you're going to remove that...
Timber.
That timber there, that timber stuff that's there, you're going to get rid of that, you're going to do, you know, a much better project than what is there.
Yeah. Get rid of that pipe.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff that, over the decades, the owner has been doing some self-help, which...
You can use native stones.
Native stone, yeah.
Not shoppers.
Exactly.
Billy, wasn't there a permit from our Board pretty recently to do a project or part of a project here?
Not on this property.
I see there's rocks there already.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes these people are engaging in...
They did a little self-help.
Self-help, as they, as they call it, but now, you know, it's good that you're coming in because now you got a good plan, I think, going on here, from what I can see. I mean, James, our environmental analyst, we were there, I mean, we both kind of thought that made sense with what you had going on there. You are, you are getting beat up pretty good.
What's the difference in elevation between the beach and above the rocks?
It's about two feet.
Right, you can see the...
It's pretty shallow, yeah.
You see those timbers?
Okay.
And those timbers are coming out.
Yes, as is the rock that's there and I think there's some polypropylene bags, sandbags...
That's right, I think it's sandbags here, too. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
And that little curb, the timber curb.
Yeah, that's all going to go, as indicated.
Yep.
So, is this revetment going to be covered with sand?
We're going to cover it with sand.
And are you going to plant it?
And plant it with beech grass, yes.
Isn't a northerly part of the project already have a vegetated shoreline? It has fragmites and some...
It's got fragmites, yeah.
And some, you know, marsh or meadow, basically bog there, so you could reconstruct that behind the...
We could.
Rocks in a way that, you know, probably what I'm thinking is that this type of a project is going to be almost like the living shoreline, but you're utilizing some type of structure to break the wave energy and allow the structure behind it to flourish.
We're hoping that on top of the structure and landward of the structure, the native vegetation that we plant, which is the Cape American beech grass, will do quite well because it'll have that protection. Also, there is some, it's not very evident...
James, can you scroll up a little?
But there is hints of Spartina grass that are trying to grow there. And that's what we're hoping will start populating.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. Because you got the wave fetch all the way from the Poncor Bridge on an easterly wind, which we've had several very strong storms this winter.
And it's only February.
Yeah.
I don't know if you noticed when you were there, but the flooding goes all the way back, you know, under the pool that's there, under the deck.
Now, we acknowledge, James and I were there, we spent a bunch of time there, you have to do something and I think that you're taking a...
So this project's going to be done in a way that the public will let some, either a lower tide would still acquire pass and repass, right?
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
This isn't going to interfere with the public's use of the beach there?
No way, yeah, not in that area.
Yeah, yeah. Low tide, the beach is nice and wide, it's a very shallow area, as you know, so...
Yes.
And to the north and to the south, there are bulkheads on both sides, right?
Correct.
So are you, it's hard to tell from the drawings, are you proposing the revetment to be seaward of the bulkheads or to be inland?
Well, it's right on the high water line, essentially. The bulkheads are farther seaward.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, when you go there and you look at his flags, you could see, I mean, you guys have done a really good job, in my opinion, at trying to address this in the best possible manner.
Yeah, we pulled it back.
They did pull it quite back.
Of what's there protecting and also what's on the adjacent properties.
I hope it works.
Yeah.
Because you are getting beat up pretty good over there.
Yeah, it's a, it's one of the few properties that has zero protection and it's showing, unfortunately.
Just trying to think if there are any other greener parts of it that could be substituted or added.
Well, replacing the fragmite with native, it'll go a long way.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think you did a good job.
What about maintaining the coverage of the sand on the rocks going forward?
On the seaward edge, the most seaward edge, will probably get exposed pretty, you know, on a significant storm, but what we found landward, which is where we're going to be planting a lot of the native vegetation, will do quite well. And that vegetation will hold that sand.
Well, do we want a special condition in there that the rocks will be kept covered?
I mean, it's going to be a constant, it's going to be like a constant battle, I think, no matter what.
On the seaward side, I think that's going to be tough.
It's going to be a non-stop, it'll be non-stop.
It's too volatile of an area.
Once a year?
I would think everything from the rock revetment landward, where you've got the rocks to protect the shore and the structure or whatever you plant behind there would be, that would be the area that we probably look the closest at for, you know, either sand maintenance or revegetation. Because you might need a couple planting cycles in order for the grass to take root and to establish itself. But I think once you have the rocks and, or a structure there that would break up the wave energy, I think it would work pretty good. Because I'm familiar with the area and there's, right behind it is, you know, a stand of fragmites and other grasses.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think getting the beech grass to establish itself and thrive versus being...
Spartina.
Yeah, that's Spartina, but he's specifically calling for beech grass, American beech grass.
Yeah, that's the upland part that'll do better, yeah.
You know, and try and stop in that surge and trying to stabilize what it is that you have there. It's a difficult spot that you're in. You're trying to utilize, you know, what you have in your tool belt, aside from putting a bulkhead in like other people have to protect their property, so I'm hoping that this can work out for you because you definitely have an issue that has to be addressed.
Is there an access point between the house over the structure and is it going to be a walkway there or some kind of...
It's not in the permit, is it?
No. Because if you're going to put rocks there, you're basically going to put a wall and I don't think you want to be walking across that wall.
What we are planning to do is, once this is done, the property owner would like to go and file a permit for a dock of some sort or a walkway, just to...
They want to see what it looks first.
It's better to get, you got to get your problems stabilized first, in my opinion.
Exactly.
I would do the same.
You got to get it stabilized because you have a problem there.
Yep, yeah. But to your point, yes, that's absolutely what they're considering.
Yeah, I mean, I'm very familiar with the area and it's, you know, between two points that are, you know, have bulkheads, so...
Ready for the next one?
You're good.
Thank you.
Is that very good?
Mr. Parish?
You good, everybody?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Billy.
Next one is a modification renewal for 11 Shinnecock Road. This is for the Shinnecock Shores Association.
Billy could have stayed for this. Do you need him up?
Billy?
First Coastal.
Me, too.
I don't think it is you.
Billy, for that last one, we just need the stamp plans.
Yeah, it is you.
Stamp plans, yes.
Kelly, it's got Kelly Hoffman here.
Okay.
This is a, it's a maintenance dredge project for the Dolphin Marlin, Tarpon, Barracuda, Whiting canals, they have a maintenance dredge. Due to the scope and nature of the dredging project, the applicant proposes to pay the dimensional fees for the trusted permit for individual canal. Just, you're looking to modify this...
It's changing it from hydraulic to a clamp shell.
To a clamp shell, right, that's all you're, that's all you're doing, is you're just going to clamp shell, so I'm not opposed to that, there's no issue with that.
It's a simpler way to...
It's a simple, it's a simple modification.
And what's, what's the reason for that?
I believe that was a request from the DEC to go to clamp shell on that. And it works out with the type of equipment that will be there.
Right, a lot of these canals, that's what they do, to do these little maintenance dredge, it's just a lot easier to just handle it and grab it.
Reach in with something of the longer reach, yeah.
Right, so you're just tightening up the methodology in terms you're going to be doing this dredging, it's absolutely needed, so I think it should move forward.
And where does the spoil go?
I think it's dedicated site up, upland, behind the bulkhead.
Right, and a lot of the times they take it to a DEC-approved site, they'll put it in containers and it's out of there. Because there's not a lot, you don't have tremendous amount, they have to get rid of it someplace else.
It's very sandy, very clean material.
Have you been looking or been paying attention to the beneficial use of dredge spoils at all in any other areas?
Sure, we...
I wish we would start to.
Yeah, we really like to combine it with some type of restoration, either upland, even if it's simply upland or on an eroded shoreline.
Yeah.
Not many of the projects that we're dredging from have, you know, an eroded shoreline that we can marry up with a project, but whenever we can.
Has that been done or is that being done at all that you see with DEC or anywhere in the state? Because I know it's been done in other locations, but I think that we're behind the curve a little.
Well, it's not just us.
Not in this, not in this...
No, no, because...
But just looking forward.
Well, I mean, in some instances, the contractors will take it back to a site that they have and they will let it, they'll let it dry out and then they'll then get a permit for repurposing that material. You know, the applicants come in, they can only keep so much on site, they negotiate with the contractor that's doing the job, they're taking it to a specific site, obviously if there's a lot of, you know, volatile compounds in it, then it's very expensive to go someplace else and you're talking about a different conversation.
But if it's beach compatible, which it typically is...
Right, then it's drying out, it's going to someplace and then they'll, they'll work that out, but that's what those contractors do. I'm sure it does happen more times than you even know.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, it's always hard to try to get that dredge material when you need it because it never overlaps. But like you said, a lot of excavating contractors will store this for specific use, can't really use it for like making concrete or anything like that because of salt content, but for shoreline stabilization projects, we've been able to utilize some of that.
Other things, we're not involved at that part of the equation, you know, we're permitting it and then they're negotiating their deals with their contractors and then they're following the DEC's, our protocols, and then they're doing their thing. We're not, you know, if it's our project, like something that we're doing, you know...
Then you can do it.
Right.
In other areas, though, it's being used for marsh restoration and that's a really interesting concept, especially if the property or the site was...
Warranted, yeah, sure, sure.
When the DEC gets involved, they have a philosophy of keeping it in the system, which is usually along that shoreline or in that proximity. Once that material is put in the truck and trucked away, there's another whole layer of DEC becomes hazardous material, it needs to be looked at for VOCs, and then it adds a lot of cost to the, that material.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we did a project with the county at Porstus Creek, we dredged eight, nine thousand cubic yards of material, let it dry out on the property owner, and then it was used on a property north in Porstus Creek for shoreline restoration because there was a low sill bulkhead place there and it was planted and it's, that project has flourished.
Yeah, yeah.
So there are...
That's a good combination.
Which, which we all try to do the research, like I'll give you an example, when we were doing a dredging project or a potential dredging project in Shinnecock Bay, talking to you and Arum about North Sea Beach Colony and moving the material down there.
Yeah.
Because it is in the marine system and I think it would be beach compatible, so which, which the material has to be with that site, so, but we've always tried to do these projects with a future beach restoration in, in sight, yeah.
Right, but for this application, for what you got going on here, the modification is fully acceptable, very, okay, and I think we're good to go with that, Billy.
Thanks.
Thank you, Billy. Next one I have is Marina Brant.
Real quick, sorry to interrupt you, Scott. The application was taken incorrect on this one. It's actually Bayview Drive, Village Aquaglue, not Bayview Drive, West Hampton, so that's a change in our system, but so the name is incorrect. We still have the proper documents and everything, but just wanted to make you aware of that.
Yeah, I just, I think, does anybody here representing this application?
Grab this.
Nobody's, nobody's here representing this application.
Do you want to discuss it a little or do you just want to...
Well, I, it...
We're just doing another day.
Well, it just, it doesn't, I don't see where there's a, in the blue book regulations, I don't, first of all, it just says to add an additional section of floating dock X and one piling to existing approved dock, but if you look at the regulations that we all follow, it looks to be all out of spec, so I think that this can't, can't go anywhere right now, I think we need to have a conversation with the, with the applicant, so...
Because they already have a catwalk on a floating dock.
But if you look at the regulations that we all follow, it, it looks to be all out of spec, so I think that this, this can't, can't go anywhere right now. I think we need to have a conversation with the, uh, with the applicant, so.
Cause they already have a catwalk on a floating dock.
Right, right, right.
They want to add an additional.
Right, so our regulations are clear. I think we, we, we're gonna go move on to the next one and we'll have a conversation with the, uh, with the applicant. I was hoping they would be here, but we will, we will reach out and we'll deal with that. All right, so trustee Pell?
At sixty-four down East Lane, Jim Walker, Interscience, step forward please.
Hello there, Jim.
Hey, Jim.
How's it going?
Hi, Jim.
Morning, Jim.
This file's getting pretty thicker by today.
What's that?
This file on this permit gets thicker by today.
Well, the village has slowed down everything, but, uh, for the board information, Martha Riker is here representing, uh, her client who lives next door, whose dock I also got approved five or six years ago. It's originally Fred Havemeyer's property. Sixty-four down East Lane, we're back to see the board of trustees because DEC asked us to change the drop platform to four foot by six foot exactly, so we changed the plans, we submitted them and you had issued a permit.
So we just have to amend it?
You, you would be asked to amend a permit.
Is, is it the size of the drop platform that we're amending?
It's a little bit smaller.
Small.
They, they wanted us, uh, we, we tried to provide a drop platform that you could put a kayak in the water more practically. But the DEC asked us to revise it, make it narrower and, um, more precisely four foot by six feet, so we did. And, uh, we are still in front of the, um, the village. The village has had a hard time approving this project, so we are proceeding again tomorrow. While everybody is at dinner for Valentine's Day, I will be at the zoning board of the state.
Do you want to?
Pushing a well's permit.
Do you want to submit the new, the new thing?
I submitted it, though. It's, it's into you.
I saw that.
You have it. It's not very exciting. We made the four foot by six foot platform precisely four foot by six feet so that it meets the, the current DEC's.
We go forward with that?
I have an Army Corps permit, I have a Department of State permit. I'm finished with the DEC, so.
Just us and the village?
We're bringing you up to speed.
Okay, I have no problem with it.
And the access here for both properties for their kayaks or paddleboards is fine in this narrow.
Yes, they're high tide.
There's no water in this. It goes dry at low tide.
It goes, goes dry at low tide. Martha's been in the, the creek. I nev- I never...
Are you participating in this whole thing, Martha?
I mean, I'll, I'll do what you guys want.
If you, if you're, is she participating in this?
She can come up and say hello.
If you're gonna be, if you're here and you have something connected with this, I think it's better that you're on the record, so.
She's the only person I know that went in that creek.
If you're here and you're referencing her, I think she should be part of the record here.
I think, I think her husband...
Endless mud bottom.
Uh, it was terrifying. Luckily, I brought my husband and he handed me a kayak paddle so that I could, I, because I started sinking in.
I already, I already heard this whole story before.
You did, so, so you're for this, you're for this, this is?
Um, you know, my client's concerns are just about the navigability. Um, one of the things that, over the process is Jim flipped the drop platform to go a little bit further towards the east, which I, we both felt alleviated any issues. And now the platform's just being made smaller, so I don't have any specific objections to this.
We're gonna launch a kayak here and the board should be aware that the guy has a mooring permit in Hedy Creek. He is the guy that kept a little Boston Whaler at his, um, uh, property, which is the old Dupont Estate. I, I don't remember the, the street address on Middle Lane, but he's the guy that had the little Boston Whaler at Munt's Point.
Oh, okay.
So you check all the boxes here?
It's been there forever.
In, in Little Pond.
He knows where it was.
Yeah, I fish, I fish here, so I'm familiar with this area.
Well, his mooring's now in Hedy Creek, cause you gave him a permit, uh, transfer.
You fish everywhere.
Well, if I could just add one last thing, my client's concern was that a boat might be permanently berthed there, but I think the village is working on that.
There's no way you can get a boat up to Hedy. You ran that out.
Yeah, so it's very shallow.
Again, she's the only person I know that went in the creek.
City cramps in there.
Well, then she's qualified to comment on it. The only one qualified.
No, Billy, that's where the white bait hangs out this time here.
So, we're all good with it?
If you're all good with it, I'm all good with it. It's all, checks all the boxes of what we need and you, you know, you have to resolve your issue with the village, whoever that is, but for our boxes, it seems as if you're okay.
And the next one, we have fifty-six.
For that one, we need stamp plans, so.
Thank you, thank you, Martha. Nice to see you.
It's nice to see you as well.
Thank you for taking a walk in the creek.
Yeah.
Martha was on the other side of the table for a while.
Stay in that mud.
We just need stamp plans for that one.
For?
Always bring a friend.
Sixty-four.
Right, and a paddle.
And a paddle.
The next one is a, is a renewal. And you have stamp plans and that's a simple renewal, so.
Which one are we talking about now?
Fifty-six.
So it's just a renewal with no changes?
Yes.
No changes.
And we already have what we need?
You have what you need.
So?
So I'll pause you, hold on.
What's it for?
Bulkhead.
Okay.
Guy's name is Trader Skip. And we got permits for the guy, then we got renewals for the guy, and we went through the permit process over and over again. And I said, listen, I'm not gonna do it again. I'll get a renewal, you build the bulkhead or you can go talk to somebody else.
It's expired, so you guys did give a permit, it just expired, so it's technically a new application now.
It's a new application.
New application, but he's, he's gonna build the bulkhead this time.
But the, but the specs are exactly as prior approved?
Yes.
And this time you have stamp plans?
Engineer plans.
Okay.
Is fifty-six is the right address? It's just showing marsh.
Fifty-six is the right address. No, there, there's a bulkhead there and a dock and we're replacing the bulkhead and the dock.
So it's vacant?
It's vacant.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I did have a question on that.
Properties in Goldsboro are vacant.
The, the, when he puts the, the float out, the width of that canal, it's pretty, pretty narrow out there. He put a boat there.
Does it meet the tests?
We're, we're at two point seven to four point seven feet.
And, and what do you got, distance to the other shoreline?
Distance to the other shoreline, ten feet off the boundary line.
I didn't do this project initially, I'm ranting for a while.
It doesn't show the distance across, so.
You have, you have that scale?
I can let you know.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Just have to meet the, uh, the third?
One third.
Yeah.
So, Bill, we'll send it to you.
And also, he'd been bringing his float up through the neighbor's grass, killing the grass. You can see the path.
You should put a condition on your permit.
Yeah, he can't be, has to be a stored up land, but he can't drag it over the neighbor's grass.
So.
You know where this is? That's up in there, there's some plants up in there.
Yes.
There's plants up in there, you know the trees there?
Yes.
Well, we don't want to talk that.
Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll send you the width of the canal.
Okay.
Uh, if you wanna condition the, the float.
Stored seasonally.
Stored seasonally, but can't be dragged up on a neighbor's property.
You should, you should put that in all your permits.
Stored seasonally upland location, I'm in the grass.
Yeah, that's what you should do.
It's already there.
It's already there.
Yeah, just people have to abide by it.
But he has to, can't, he can't be dragging it up over killing the grass.
I got you.
You can see the trenches.
We must all abide by the requirements.
The next one's Sabrina.
We're gonna hold that.
Yeah, hold that until he gets out of there to make sure it's fine.
Is this you too, Jim?
Nope, Sabrina.
Two eighty-nine.
She's the boss.
Two eighty-nine, Noack LLC.
Yeah.
She's the boss of Interscience.
Hello.
If you didn't know.
Morning, everyone.
You're the boss.
She's the wife, isn't she?
Before I begin, I had sent digitally revised plans on Thursday before I saw that I was on the agenda. I don't know if they made it your way. Um, the plans have essentially been revised to take off the kayak rack. I have extra copies if everybody wants them or if you wanna talk about the next.
Did you get them, James? Survey says?
I sent them to Nick and Jamie with CC, but I have, yes, yes.
Do you have copies?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, of course.
Cause we had stamp one.
You don't have the two eight ones?
Can we cut this back? Cause there's like no water there. Go out and, um, is the same depth for a length of time?
Right, here on the soundings at one point two, we tried to locate it in the place that was deepest. It's sixty feet from mean high water. But you want it cut back?
Yeah, if you could.
Okay, what do you want it cut back to?
We think it'd go back maybe to like point six.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
That gives, that gives you over the, the, over the line into the water.
Okay, and point six, you want the end of the, you want the drop platform to end at four, okay.
Yeah, cause there's no need to be way at that far because nothing changes.
Okay.
If you don't mind. I'd be happy for the environment.
Okay.
Yeah, and it would give you access to the, to the pond.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what the handrails are gonna look like?
Yes, it'll be, um, five quarter inch by six inch top rail with a five quarter inch by four inch side rail and then a vinyl clad stainless steel wire in between. And that'll be a leaf mulch patch, path down to the...
Do they really need the handrails there?
Um, I think it was for safety, so that it's not...
You're almost, you're four foot plus up, it looks like, right?
Right, yeah.
It's high.
Yeah, you're high, so if somebody falls off that.
Yeah, I guess you can just leave them there.
Yeah.
It's pretty high though.
Right.
You just don't, you just don't wanna have all these spindles, so it looks like you're kinda minimalist there.
Yeah, yeah.
Did a good job on it. Let Jim know that.
She's the boss.
This is like criticizing too much.
Is there language about treated material?
Um, I have it on the description of work. It's not on the plans, um, indicating that it'll be light penetrating and constructed with non-treated wood, but I can have that added to the plan.
Open decking.
Yeah, it should be flowed through.
Flow through or through flow?
It is fiberglass open grating decking on the fourth page. It's all described there.
Where's the, where's the, if the cover sheet indicates all this?
No, it has to be put on the cover sheet.
It is on the cover sheet, but I will, I have to revise it to take off the kayak rack and then, um, language about shortening the dock.
So.
Also on the plans. So we need everything to match.
Okay.
Right, and then obviously the final approved plan's gotta be the stamp plan.
Yes.
So James?
So we'll hold that, waiting for the...
Hold it pending you getting all this stuff.
All information.
Okay, and then I'll come back for a work session or?
Uh, we might not have to.
I mean, if you comply with that, I mean, you're always welcome to come to the work session.
If you comply with that, it's gotta come back to work.
It's gotta come. It's a matter of whether she's gotta come.
Yeah, okay.
You know what I mean? You can, if you're the boss, you can delegate change. That would, that would be the thing to do.
You might be celebrating Valentine's Day though.
I know, that's what I was thinking. Okay, I will make those changes and resubmit them.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get this back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thanks, thanks, Brianna.
Thank you.
We have an application for Dorian Farrell, Six Cedar Drive Hampton Bay.
Thank you.
This applicant here. Um...
Did we hear from?
James, did we hear?
You, you wanna hold this? You don't have the applicant?
No, I wanna hold this because we originally did a review of this and it has issues with the, uh, you know, the setbacks on the extended property lines and we shortened the dock to fifty-five feet by four feet. And subsequently, there was a ramp and a float that was added on without a permit, which is...
Just the one that the neighbors would have planned.
No, there's no, it's in, uh, Cameron Point Cove, but so they're not here, so.
Just hold it.
I'm gonna hold it, yes.
Hold it.
Yes.
Move on to your next, uh...
Yep. Um, the next one is, uh, Fifty Little Neck Road LLC, Fifty Little Neck Road, Shinnecock Hills. Uh, this is with, um, Jim Walker and Interscience. Again?
So you came up with that divorce?
Ship without a captain. This is Henry Eldredth. And for what it's worth, we have finished with the Army Corps, the Department of State, and we've made progress here. And we have shown on the current plans exactly what's required at the Army Corps and the, and the DEC. It is the, last time I was here, we were going to show a drop platform at a hundred feet. So that's where we are. Dunwa, Ed, uh, and I discussed at that particular time. And this project's ready for you guys to approve.
Give the overhead shot.
Property owner's gonna complain if you make him go get an engineer, uh, engineer drawings because he's been in this process for a long time, but.
Well, there's no water there and we're trying to accommodate, uh, a dock that has been there without a permit for many years.
The, the, the original dock was permitted. I got it.
With a float?
No. Oh, the floats are illegal as could be.
Yeah, so this is, but this is, you require...
Sorry, Ian, I'm honest to a fault.
Well, you're...
That's what it is.
You're gonna acquire, you know, two feet of water, which would float a small Boston Whaler and it, and it would be appropriate in, in the area, so, um, yeah.
I, I think it's an improvement over people having illegal floats. Um, we, we've tried to, uh, work with the property owner to give them something that they would, uh, agree to and install and abide by the permits.
But you're not gonna put a condition that we can only have Boston Whaler, right?
No, 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 and I'm just telling you what, what...
That's forty-two.
Is there a channel along part of there or is it down further?
No, this, there's no channel offshore here. It's all pretty flat bottom there. It's in Fort Pond. This is what it looks like right now.
Yeah, those, those loading docks are totally out of spec.
Yeah. Well, there's three of them there now. They've multiplied.
Having three floats on a, on a bay bottom is a bad idea. But what we're trying to do is give the, uh, property owner something that he can live with and enjoy without having illegal improvements.
That's a good idea.
That's the best way to approach most of these, uh, projects.
Yeah, and this winter, that whole entire structure was completely dry there, so a little bidgeetide, so. It would be something that we would approve and in the summer season, he could use a boat and access the pond and...
We would be compliant there.
Yeah, correct.
So the only question is his, uh, statement about the stamp plan. You can kick that around yourself, Scott.
Yes, so we, we, all we, we need is stamp plans for this.
That's good enough.
And you can tell we're, we're, it should get approved.
We'll, we'll be back to you as soon as we can.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Um, next application is, um, Old Harbor Colony Property Owners Association, Eight Canal Way, Hampton Bay, Coal Environmental. Good morning. I believe this will be the, there are, there have been at least two other projects that have been done with other consultants here to protect the association property, which is between two bulketed, uh...
Yes.
Yes.
Properties. And there's been quite a lot of erosion here and they're trying to save the, you know, the property for the association because, uh, many people in the association do use the property during the summer season.
Yes, and...
I grew up there.
Oh, really?
Yes. My gun or a...
Gun, my gun, really.
Yep.
Spent a lot of time there.
Um, they have tried, uh, core logs in the past and it, um, had, they haven't been successful.
Core logs, they've tried, uh, rocks of certain sizes and certain, yeah, part of it.
Part, yeah, part of the way across.
Yeah, unfortunately, on a southwesterly wind, the waves literally ricochet off a bolt and a bulkhead's there.
Yeah.
Um, you wanna look at it? And there you go, trying to stabilize it and at the same time maintain a beach for the community.
Yes.
Basically, the existing rocks to be relocated two feet landward of the average mean high water. New five to seven hundred pound, uh, rocks be installed at least two feet landward of the average, uh, mean high water to, uh, con- continue the line east and west. Rocks will be dug in two feet landward of the average high water To uh con- continue the line east and west, rocks will be dug in two feet landward of the average high water with the second line of rocks, five to seven hundred pounds to be installed directly landward. All rocks will be installed in within four by s- uh four, four inch by six inch crushed stone and uh backfill the cleats and Spartana paintings and Amelia Foria Bevora.
Beach grass.
Beach grass, yeah.
Beach grass. To be planted, uh supplement of the rocks to be uh installed on crushed stone and filter fabric at corners of the bulkhead elevation not to exceed mean high water. Uh, most seaward e- existing rocks to be removed, remaining existing rocks seaward of the average mean high water to remove. Remain in place and existing intertidal marsh to be re- remain undisturbed. Basically, they're just looking to put these uh rocks to break up the wave energy and to re-vegetate the whole entire uh beach.
Yes, and there was a discrepancy with um the mean high watermark, so the DEC asked that we just uh revise the plans to bring everything two feet landward, which is why we're moving the most seaward rock.
Yeah.
So it's a little confusing, but instead of, you know.
Considerable amount of erosion this winter down there, so.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
And just repeat to me what was tried previously, cora logs?
Yeah, they have cora logs and there was, uh, they did put some rocks in, but not the full way across the beach, so they have them on both sides with planting.
They did this, they did the rocks here and they did the rocks over here, leaving this open for cora logs and basically with the wave, it doesn't have a lot of wave edge, but it has a lot of wave energy and the cora logs literally got washed out.
Yeah.
No wake zone, there's no wake zone now further south.
You're gonna use native rocks round.
Right.
Gonna use native rocks round, no shop.
It should be, because it's a, it's within five hundred feet.
Okay. Is that?
See, when I was a kid, the, the no wake zone was further.
Native rounds, no sharp edges.
Yeah, no shop.
Okay, it's way north.
Way north.
Yeah, that's, I, I'm gonna.
But I think they moved it first, I think they moved the no wake zone further south.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people.
Yes, I think um subsequently they'll apply for some sort of platform to go over or.
Yeah, that was my next question, because originally there was a pathway with sand and allowed the public to access.
Over the rocks.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you're gonna put rocks along the whole entire stretch, you're gonna need a walkway.
Yeah.
Which should, should, I would say should be part and parcel of the whole project.
Yeah, it's not a priority currently, this is more the priority and then I think they'll figure out exactly what they want to.
Yeah, they wanna stabilize.
Okay.
That was a great place for families to go and enjoy, have picnics on the weekends and.
Yeah, this is the original project here.
It's a nice property.
Yeah, it is.
You consider.
Yeah.
And we're, we're trying to maintain some of the sandy area behind the rocks, so they can still have a, you know, have a beach area.
Yeah.
That was a cool place to go over.
Yeah, I've been down there quite a, quite a few times.
Yeah, and the no wake zone was further to the north, so.
Yes.
But I think they changed that, they did, they made that further south to eliminate.
There's five hundred feet is right in there.
Yep. Back in the day, it was, it was all the way, the no wake zone started all the way up in here.
Yeah. Okay.
And that was back when um Forrest Feldman's was there, there was older big wooden boats.
Yep.
Back then the other side and you had Hampton Boat Works on the uh, on the east side.
Yep.
A lot of large vessels going in and out there.
Yeah, I, I think this is a, is a, well, continuation of a project, um, because it's like when we originally met down there, the beach was barely eroded and we tried the cora logs and unfortunately, you know, they worked only temporarily and uh being that the storm elevations and such, they just wash out because they actually, without them being immersed in water regularly, they become buoyant float.
Yeah.
The stakes remain.
Yeah, the stakes are still there.
They decompose too.
Right.
You good?
Spots in between bulkheads are tricky.
And, and we've received a verbal approval from the DEC, they're just writing up the, the conditions, so they've given us the verbal on the plan as it is.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, uh, stamp plans and uh, well, I mean, are, are the, is there gonna be any adjustments to these plans from the DEC?
No.
I don't believe so.
These are the adjustments that already have been made, uh, based on their comments.
Okay.
Yeah. Exactly.
So basically, these plans stamped and then we'll put it on for the uh general work session. I mean, the, the general meeting.
Well, it goes to a work session, it goes to a work session, but only to inspect the plans.
Yeah, just to make sure. Yes, there's gonna be one more work session. Make sure the plans are stamped and we have everything we can bag it.
Okay, so you need stamp plans for, for vetements and anything.
For any structure that.
Any structure.
Any permit that we're reviewing.
Gotcha. Okay, it's the appropriate designated professional that would be overseeing that type of a plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right with that, Mark?
You are correct.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Get strong, strong for pond.
Strong for pond, uh seventy-four Little Neck Road, Shinnecott Hills, any consultants?
Dave?
How are ya?
Hello.
Hi, Brian, Rob.
Rob is not available today.
Okay, you wanna present your plan?
Uh, it's, I mean, it is pretty straightforward, yeah, I mean, I'm here to really answer any questions, clarifications, anything you need.
Uh, you wanna give us a detailed, uh, play-by-play on this whole thing?
Sure, it's a really replacement of docks that are existing there to the same size requirements and also replacement of the bulkhead structure that is there.
Um, I did meet Rob, so.
Yep.
Can you go through the plans?
Yes.
Uh, a couple times, we're trying to, basically, it's the old uh Course Mariner Best Boat Works prior to that.
Mm-hmm.
Dock has been there for, I don't know, seventy years.
At least, yeah.
Um, so we're just trying to clean it up, uh, bring it up to our s- today's standards, put a buffer there, um.
Good, I'll go to this one here.
Yes. Hold the.
Then keep the configuration of the docks.
Yes.
As is.
Uh, this is the character of the work. Remove and replace in place approximately a hundred and two linear feet of uh existing timber bulkhead with vinyl bulkhead. Incidentally dredged uh ten feet by forty-foot area, um seaward of the uh bulketed area to the maximum depth of four feet below mean low water. Using approximately fifteen cubic uh yards of sand spoil to, as backfill, maintain a ten-foot wide gravel buffer landward. Uh, the replaced bulkhead, remove and replace the existing uh thirteen-foot uh timber return and a thirteen-foot vinyl return along the property line. Remove and replace in place the existing six by forty, five by fifty, one and five by thirty-four sections of fixed pier dock. Two uh, three by twelve ramps and a five by a hundred and forty-seven, a five by thirty-nine, a five by six, uh, uh, six by twenty, a five by a hundred and forty-six. And a five by uh fifty-four floating docks. Remove and replace in place up to fifty-four feet of existing uh floating dock tie-off piles, um, basically as needed. As depicted on the project plans uh submitted by, and consultants, December sixteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one. Most of the pilings that are in there now are creosote pilings, um, they actually, some of them came from the old Ponquod Bridge. Uh, so uh they were repurposed many, many, many years ago. So this whole project in general is going to be getting rid of, you know, treated lumber, creosote and uh, you know, I think it's a really good project, giving us a buffer. Uh, filling in part of a uh, a man-made uh launch there and so that you guys, instead of using a travel lift, you're gonna use a forklift, so.
Yeah. You have plans to look at?
Yep.
That, that component is gonna be to follow, we're waiting on engineering, waiting on the engineering drawings.
Okay. Yes, because that part, you need, you have bigger, um.
The end of the floats out there or the uh? Are they inside the property or outside?
That's a great question, they uh, they, they are what they've been for seventy plus years.
We have. Yeah. Yeah, they, she could've done it.
Second or third year of ownership, so.
Yeah, I know. Um, you guys do, do a very good job.
Thank you.
Um. But it's hard for us to issue a permit if it's over the property owner.
Understood.
The extended property line you're talking about?
You know. Yeah, yes.
You're saying the out, outis, utmost floats?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause then it, you're, you're in other guy's view shed and also.
Right. I know that's the way you're saying on the, I believe.
The north side and the south side.
It's been, been here for uh.
Yeah, the south, yeah. I know the north is within, maybe, well, the south, i- based on your drawing here, um, which looks like it's pretty current. Cause I asked when we purchased it, why the angles are so funny.
Is there a survey or does it show?
There's definitely.
We have surveys, yeah.
Does it show?
There's a survey, but it doesn't show the extended, we didn't do the extended property lines.
It doesn't show, it's.
Well.
I think we have to look at that, cause we help people like down in Secor or Cove, you know, you have to be fair to everyone.
Sure.
Cause it's narrow there.
Yeah, understood.
And.
Yeah, we take care of the gentleman to the south, but.
Yeah, I, I just get the very.
Unless, unless, unless they get a permission, a covenant from the neighbors, you know.
The south is.
Understand. Or some type of an affidavit, actually, that's what you're saying, I say, you know.
Yeah.
Because they were pre-existing.
Well, yeah, it's been there for seventy years to your point, it's like, you know.
But they might not have a permit, Joey, to get those on without a permit.
Well, that, that has been the way it was when it was before Joey Core had it.
Yeah.
When Best had it?
When Best had it. It, it hasn't changed since.
Did they all, oh, would they have permits?
The six, um, I don't, I never looked and see if the original permits were in the office from the fifty-sixties.
Yeah, we just have to be safe, you know, cause we don't wanna get ourselves into having trouble with the neighbors.
So if it's been that way for years and years, what's the right, Mark, what's the right uh process for this if um, we can get permission from the neighbors?
Well, it's a, and it's a, it's a pre-existing commercial exposure, it's, it's not like somebody putting a new dock and, you know, we've gotta cite it and everything, it's been going on for seventy years.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
But it's not consistent, so looking at it.
Well, it's like a pre-existing non-conforming situation and I think that.
We just have to pitch it. Yeah, yeah.
Right, so how do we address that?
Well, as, as just as such, I would say, I mean, Mark's the attorney, but it is pre-existing non-conforming, it's a business that's been operating. Now, you purchased, purchased it that way, it's been there, I don't have people banging down our doors complaining about this.
Complaining about.
You know, we are a maritime uh community.
But just so, being accepted and so they're protected.
Yes.
They ask for a letter of permission, they uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I noted down.
Mark, I don't know what your thoughts are on all this discussion, but.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're definitely looking to vary from the uh, the blue book requirements.
Thanks for the contact.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a letter of permission might help um with regard to the current homeowner, if they stay the current homeowner, I'm not so sure how much that will help. Um, I, I'd probably recommend following the blue book. Um, I don't know what procedure you have for seminal variances, but um regardless, it's, it's still, certainly looks like the north side is over the, the property line as you extend it out to the water, I don't know about the south side.
So uh we would need.
I would hold it.
Plan uh on, on a survey, we would need uh the uh consultant to do the extended property lines out, so see.
First, I would look. I would look, see if there's a, a vision permit for that, for Best, might be a permit back in the file.
Yeah, we would have to do uh some.
Nineteen fifty probably. Can you go back on the overhead shots?
Yeah, yes.
In aerials we can, but in permits we don't get this one.
Yeah.
Where do you wanna go?
Yeah, so you asked Rob if he can do a title search back to the fifties?
See, there's one of the same.
That would be a good starting point, I know it's a lot of work, but you know. In order for us to move forward.
I know our neighbors will give us a big kiss if we can replace the docks. They just can't stand looking at them and I, neither can we, obviously, but.
Yeah, it's, they're pretty bad.
So we're in the same footprint though, is that what you're talking?
Exact replacement, it's just.
Yeah, same.
Right, so but, but they're still gonna be looking at docks, they're just tired of looking at old docks, they wanna look at new docks, is that what you're saying?
Oh, you see twenty.
Yeah, old was ten years ago.
Well, you know what, you know what I'm getting at, because, because the trustees are, you know, they, they take into consideration, you know, you've heard the word, you shed.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, so the bottom line is, you know.
That's twenty years ago?
Yeah, this is two thousand and one.
Yeah, so it has changed, yeah.
So, go back um ten more years.
That's twenty twenty-two. Well, it looks like you pulled out one section in on the.
Yeah, that couldn't be done in a wedding time.
Yeah.
Well, you had to fix a pole, fix a, you didn't walk two feet.
Oh, so it's, it's.
When's that, James? That's back the ways.
That's um ninety-six, but the, you can't go off the tax map lines, right?
They're, they're inaccurate, yeah.
Right, just looking at that, the layout of the docks and, and, and sort of where it could, let's say, where is what the property was.
Yeah, layout, yeah.
Well, that's definitely.
Go back one more or two more.
Uh, ninety-four is usually pretty bad, so we'll go eighty-four, eighty-four is.
Oh, yeah.
That's pixelation.
Eighty-four.
It's a hammerhead shock.
Yeah.
Eighty-four, it was just, we're hammerhead.
It's in the bay.
That's in the seventies, isn't it?
That's seventy-six, yeah.
Seventy-six.
So it looks like between eighty-four and ninety-four was when they um made the changes.
So.
So there's permits for it?
Maybe you must.
I, I don't know, we, we don't, we need to know that.
I can, I can look into it.
We need to know that.
Who would have owned it at that point? Would that still have been Best's? Probably.
I can look into it.
Probably. Oh, in, in eighties, that would probably be Joe, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was Joe at that point in time, I think.
I, it was close.
Close.
Yeah.
Did you, when you bought, in purchasing it, did you do any title search on the docks and everything and permits and stuff?
Uh-huh. Mm-hmm.
Um, I know we usually do a very deep dive, uh.
I'm sure.
That's why I, I.
I think you'd be going back mentally this far, I, I'm not, I can't speak to that, but.
Can, can you get?
Yeah, definitely have it noted down yet.
Yeah.
If, if there's permits, it's not a problem.
Yeah, we, we're just trying to.
You still want to, you know, have to dig it from the neighbors and think.
I would, I would wait till.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Yeah, yeah, let's see what we got.
Let's see what was prepared originally and then we'll work out from there.
Yeah, we, we, we need.
Wasn't, wasn't Joe in, on the Shinnecott Canal in the, in the early eighties?
Where it's go.
Yeah, he was in Mary's.
In the seventies.
But he was there probably through, cause I remember when I was a consultant.
In the seventies.
That was in the late seventies, heading into the early eighties and he was still there in the early eighties?
Yes. Yes.
Um.
And then Mary's Cove gets old.
Right, and it, it was probably somewhere in the early eighties, right?
Yeah.
So. Did he have both or did he just have one?
No, he had one.
So then it was probably Best.
Yeah, it was Best back then, yeah.
It was Best.
So that's why I said, a tile search with names, we could look up the permits and then we can get a, you know, a timeline of what has transpired here over the last few decades.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, ancient history.
Yeah.
He might be.
Check with him, he might be.
Based on my own age, I don't know if I'm gonna call it ancient history.
Looks kinda, he has, he's got a foil.
Yep.
Okay, great.
All right, all right, thank you, Ryan, thank you for coming down.
Yes, absolutely. Have a very nice seeing. All right, we, we have an executive eleven, so.
Okay, we're, um.
Trustee Welkers.
Yep, uh, three sixty-one Dune Road LLC, Conic Environmental, let me just double check this, but they sent an email the other day requesting that this be held. Um, James, was there any follow up to that that you saw?
I didn't see any.
I have no problem holding it since we're not, we can't discuss it.
So, um, this is snow fencing, um, so it's no fencing installation, so we'll hold that. Uh, project two eighty-seven LLC modification at forty-five eighty-five, uh, Noak Road, um, Mr. Halsted Wells, if you'd like to come. Forward, great.
Good morning.
Morning, how are you? Do you wanna do a?
Sign in, I was wondering why I was still staying here.
Yes, and then maybe you could give a, a, uh. Just a brief description of what you've encountered here, time wise and permit wise. So, this is a. This is a project that was previously, um, permitted by the trustees, but then. Mr. Halsted went through, go ahead, you can carry on if you'd like.
I've finally got everything together, uh, but it, uh, meaning. The approvals of the, the, what was the delay was the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of State. Which the Army Corps of Engineers needed in order to, um, so I'm basically, I've, I've run through my four. Um, uh, permits and the, the expiration and, um, I'm asking for. Uh, on this same plan, just one more year here to get the thing. Now that I have everything together. The, uh, everything together, I guess, would mean the modification to the original thing that was required by the Army Corps of Engineers. And the Department of State.
Okay. So I'm fine with this. There, it's been a modification that's been requested at the, um, D E C had a couple of changes. Um, but nothing significant, um, they've all been made, um, proposed fixed dock is minimum four feet above wetlands. Uh, access ramp is replaced with tiered landings and steps and, uh, seasonal aluminum ramps replaced by one with a wood frame. And, uh, open fiberglass mesh.
So they don't want aluminum ramp, they want?
Actually, they didn't object to that. It was one of the objections that one of the neighbors made. Uh, and the Army Corps said, what are you gonna say about this objection we got? And I said, actually, I agree. I'd be happy to put in a, uh, something other than, and I learned that there was. Other ramps, you didn't have, you weren't stuck with aluminum ramp.
Yeah.
So, it was in response to.
Right, so you just, yeah, no, I understand. I just was wondering if they, what their rationale was.
Yeah, no, no, it wasn't, that wasn't there. I was just meeting some neighbor objections.
So this is, time is of the essence, basically, because, um.
Is it a renewal or a modification?
It's a modification.
Yeah, so they, he did four renewals already, um, so he's up on his renewals, um. After we talked, he said that he, if, if he gets this modification, he's gonna try to get the work done before the permit expires. Is that correct?
Yes. Right, Mr. Halsted, you're gonna get the, you're gonna get the work done as soon as possible now that you've been.
Yeah, yeah, I'll move forward. I mean, besides that, the damn cost has doubled since what it was when I started this process. So I need a little bit of put together, but yes, as soon as possible. So, yeah.
Good.
Okay, so we could please.
So we need stamp plans?
Thank you.
We have stamp.
Okay.
Okay, for the modification.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Trustee Parish.
Yes, we have, uh, Christopher Walters, twenty-one Baycrest Avenue, West Hampton, Land Use Ecological Services. How you doing, guys?
We're good, good.
Um, I think it's a pretty simple application, um, it seems to meet the blue book standards. The total length of the dock, uh, uh, structure from high water is, um, one hundred feet. Um, you can see from the depths, um, we do have it chocked, it gets to two feet of water, uh, but just barely. One eight, two one, fourteen, twenty-four, right. Pardon me?
Chalk on, of course.
Yes, I mean, I'll make sure that we do. Yeah, but other than that, I, I think it meets, uh, all your, all your standards.
Well, James, what were the issues you said?
Um, so in the past, you guys have really gone under two feet with chocks, um, that I'm aware of. Uh, so the inside of this floating one, one point four, which would be. Yeah, pretty low for a chocks, but in the past. Um. I think that if, potentially if you make it a T or an L.
Yeah, that's what I was.
It'll get you out a little further and keep that within a hundred feet and you'll be up more towards like one point nine.
I have no, I have no problem.
So at least with chocks in here at one point nine, closer to two feet, uh, rather than one point four, cause then you're gonna have the float sitting up high with the low water underneath.
Yeah.
I don't know how safe that is.
So we'll just extend the fixed dock out and then put a T. They're probably.
That's, you know, I don't know, but you guys.
With no float?
Um, right.
With no float or with a float?
Oh, no, with a float, with the float at the.
He wants to have the float in a T?
Right, T.
With the chocks underneath the bill.
Right, but that'll get, that'll get to two feet at, at the, uh.
Or closer to the, uh.
That probably gets.
And actually the boat would be even deeper than that.
And what's, is there a clear line here?
It's a hundred feet.
Okay.
So you just make.
And this still works with the third, third, third?
Yeah, it's.
Yes.
It's pretty.
And it's, it looks consistent with, uh.
Others in the, in the, I mean, the three.
Survey here.
What's that?
It's in Baycrest.
Beaver Dam.
Beaver Dam.
Beaver Dam, Beaver Dam.
And there's no suburb department, like Yegres vegetation on the bottom, so.
There's pretty healthy natural shoreline.
Yes. Yeah, no, we're not proposing anything along the shoreline.
I don't know, if it meets blue book at that stage, you just gonna have to revise your plans.
Yeah, no, we'll do that. We'll, we'll revise the plans, so, uh, based upon that, I don't know, I guess you're gonna, well, you'll have to come, we'll have to come back here anyway, so. Okay, no, no problem.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
We need to stay up on the school. Once you look at this again and then we're gonna ask to stamp plans in the file.
Always stamp.
Always need stamp plans.
We have to stamp, these originals, if they send us a stamp, so they can stamp the new ones too.
Right.
Okay.
Revision.
We'll hold, having the new plans in conversation.
Yes.
Then you got another first coastal here, another couple of first coasts.
Two first coasts, yeah.
We saved a seaport.
Thank you, Captain Barn, thank you.
All right.
Start with, uh, the nine Apica Point Lane.
Mm-hmm.
Which was a modification renewal.
Right, uh, that's when we, we separated the two projects, the bulkhead project to the dredging.
Yeah.
Um, and we're just looking to finalize this bulkhead project, which has already been inspected and, uh, close it out.
The modification was just to add the, um, language about the buffer.
That's right.
Um.
Five hundred and twelfth feet of.
The Spartina, yeah, we took it.
So when they submitted the application, it left off that section of it and we just had them add it.
Okay.
When we discussed the last, so they added.
Right, so that's all this is about, it's modified.
Yep. I, I think it'd be fairly simple.
Yeah.
And the next one is a seven Tanner's Neck Lane in West Hampton.
This was before the trustees on October twelfth. And they've made some revisions, you wanna tell us about that still?
Yeah, um. So we relocated the dock to the east side of the property and connected it with the existing. Uh, moved the proposed ramp and float and instead just proposing a, a straight catwalk within L shape. Uh, and then we reduced the length to extend only a hundred feet out from, uh, mean high water.
Can you zoom in on that a little bit, please?
Yep. So here's a, uh, updated plan, I don't know, unfortunately.
So this is a long catwalk over the marsh?
Yes.
Okay.
Get a ladder on you?
Um, usually put ladders in, I'm not sure if it's shown on the detail.
And did we do an advisory letter on that?
We could certainly add that.
No, we didn't do an advisory letter.
This.
How long is that catwalk above, how high is that catwalk above mean high water?
Quite, quite long.
Yeah.
Is this the Village of West Hampton or? This is Tanner's Neck, I believe, is not in the village. All right. No, it's not.
Well, the whole structure is three hundred and nine feet, so it's still one hundred and nine feet.
Yeah.
It's still one hundred and nine feet above.
There's other, there's other catwalks like that, cause I remember.
Yeah, there's a bunch.
Didn't want any, and we didn't, we wanted up there in the drainage, um, that.
Mm-hmm.
That was at Baycrest.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's.
Big, big.
Pretty limited, uh, access and this kind of requires us to be right in there. Yeah, right in that corner. So it's just, uh, north of that. The property that sticks out with the bulkhead, I don't know, I'm sorry, it's, you're, uh, looking at this one here. So it is a lot of marsh that has to go over that, so.
Yeah. There's no other way to access it because it's all marsh there.
Yeah, I walked, I walked properties.
Marsh.
Where's your waiters?
Unfortunately, no, I wore boots.
Need to get waiters.
There's a mosquito ditch that goes way up there in that town.
Yeah, 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 weaves all the way up. It's consistent with the docks over marsh, so, um.
The other properties improved right up to the.
Up to right up to the, exactly, yeah, this, this is one of the few that has the buffer of the natural mar- marsh areas.
It's right next to the old Baycove.
Exactly. Surprised you remembered it.
Well, I was up there on Friday.
Staked it out and, uh, looked at all of these areas.
Yeah, that's too funny. People forget about that place, as they should, maybe. A, uh, advisor letter or not?
There's a fair amount of, I'm sorry.
No, no, forgive me, I haven't directed.
Uh, there's a fair amount of, I mean, if we're looking for a couple of things, the least amount of disturbance of vegetation. In order to get to the highest, the deepest water, we, we've done that here, cause this is the deepest water. In order to get out to it, but I, I think it's still a good idea to get the advisory letter, given that it's extensive.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all like penetrating, decking that you're putting there, so that wherever is there is, it's gonna flourish.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's.
So I'll hold a, a advisor letter.
Okay, other than that, you're good with everything?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's mine, I think it's just, uh. Understand, just the consideration is substantial.
Yes.
It's stamped.
Yes.
Um, to make sure we're meeting everybody's concerns and that's it. Yes, okay.
Yep, this last one is, thank you, Billy.
You're welcome, of course.